Just waiting for two more folks to show up.
I don't know the dynamics of the whole thing, and I would not be, I'm delegated. I ask you very respectfully, it's much better to be, you know, work on my shot on the dynamics. And I was told it was true information, it's, you know, just a car.
All right, hold on one second.
Ready?
Call to order, the eighth regular meeting, oh, strike that. Oh, yes, the eighth regular meeting of the Lynn City Council for 2016, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Present.
Present, Counsel Cahill?
Present.
Present, Counsel Capano?
Present.
Present, Counsel Chakoudas?
Present.
Present, Counsel Calucci, absent, Counsel Asier?
Present.
Present, Counsel Lapia?
Present.
Present, Counsel Lozzi?
Present.
Present, Counsel Annette?
Present.
Present, Counsel Trahan?
Present.
Present, Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present and present.
If we could rise for a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, a special prayer for Kelly Vaughn in the retirement office.
Thank you, Counselor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we begin, we'd just like to note that Counsel Calucci is out of state on business, is unable to be here tonight. I'll take a motion to accept the minute meetings from April 5th, 2016. A motion made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, communications.
Communications, we have a communication from the Office of Economic and Community Development. Dear Counselors, on behalf of the Office of Economic and Community Development and the Lynn Housing Authority and Neighborhood Development, I'm requesting that you schedule a public hearing with the Lynn City Council on Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016. The purpose of this hearing is to allow public input to the city's annual action plan, including the use of the Department of Housing and Urban Development appropriations for the Community Development Block grant, emergency solutions grant, and home programs. We sincerely appreciate your assistance on our behalf, Donald Walker, Director of Project Operations.
What's the wish to the council? Motion made to set down by Counsel Trahan, seconded by Counsel Chakoudas, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Public hearings.
First public hearing, petition of Auto Solutions Auto Body, Pablo de la Cruz, for permission for an auto body shop at 606 Boston Street, RIA.
You're going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. For those wishing to speak in favor, if you could come to the podium. And we only ask that you state your name and your address for the record, sir.
I'm Pablo de la Cruz, I live in 73 Chestnut Street in Lynn, Massachusetts.
And please provide any testimony you want to provide in favor of the petition.
As I said, I've lived in Lynn, Massachusetts for like 25 years. I worked at Solutions Auto Repair for 15 years, 606 Boston Street. And tonight, I'm over here, and good evening, everyone, to try to get a special permit for an auto body. It's time for me to improve my business, to grow up in an auto body or an auto repair business. And I think it's an opportunity for me to do that, if that city allows me to.
Thank you very much for your testimony, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Sir, certainly. Hi, sir, if you'd just state your name and your address for the record.
Bienvenido reinozo, I live on 48 New Park Street. I'm also a business owner in Lynn, a barber shop, and he's been my client for years. I also send clients to his auto repair shop, and he does a good job, everybody comes back, and give me the, thanks me for sending it to him, so I'm here for his support to, we'll appreciate if we get the approved tonight.
Thank you. And just again, the name of your barber shop?
Barcelona Barber Shop, 100 Federal Street, Lynn.
That's good, a bunch of people are watching right now, and we can tell you do very good work.
Yes, he does.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please?
How are you doing? My name is Phoenix Sanchez, I've been living in Lynn since I came here, 1990, quite a while. I reside in New Park Street, 115 New Park Street. Here presenting my uncle, Pablo de la Cruz, who owns a repair shop in Boston Street. I also would like to have the opportunity to go in as a partner to open a body shop to expand the business. And unfortunately, I know he had a previous license as a body shop, and for some reason, he doesn't longer have it, but I would like to have the opportunity, if the city allows us to, allow us to have that license again, if it's possible.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? If there's folks here that are in favor but don't wish to speak, if you'd like to raise your hand as being in favor, please do so.
Good evening, my name is Francis Martinez, I'm the Executive Director of the North Shore Latino Business Association, 33 Sutton Street, and the association is endorsing Pablo de la Cruz's solution auto repair to get his auto body license. Thank you.
Thank you, Francis. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Is anyone opposed this petition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to discuss this further with the Latino Business Association, possibly a few of the neighbors. There's some concerns down there with parking, with the park and the proximity of the park, and just overall parking conditions down there, but I'd like to make a motion to table.
Motion made to table and seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci, absent, Counsel Asier?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
Thank you.
Next petition is petition of Children and Family Dentistry embraces Patrick Garcia for permission for a signed permit at 319 Lynn Way, number one.
I open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
Hello, my name is Paul Martin, I'm here with Barlow Signs out of Hudson, New Hampshire. What we're asking for is for replacement of a single-faced wall sign that we have over here. Due to visibility, you can't really see the single-faced wall sign. The existing pylon sign has limited visibility due to other signage in the area and also landscaping coming from both directions. The existing wall sign that we're looking to replace was 27 square feet, and in turn, our new one is going to be 24 square feet. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about that.
Thanks, we just stay local, and actually, you may want to provide those drawings to Counsel Capano, have you seen them?
I've seen them.
Okay, great, no need. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing, those in opposition, 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 seeing no one in opposition. I close the public hearing, those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing, Counsel Capano.
Yes, I've seen the sign, it's a nice sign, it's an upgrade. I know the owner of the building, and I think it'll look nice, I want to make a motion to grant.
Motion made to grant, seconded, any discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci, absent, Counsel Asier?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Next petition is the petition of the $1 Zone Roberto Tabalino for permission for a signed permit at 50 Boston Street.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street in Lynn. Yes, this is a standard corporate signage that is suitable for the type of business, and usually, national organizations have paid for a good vetted staff to come up with good designs. The questioning thing, the thing I question about this one is, is here we are again, this business has had those signs up for about five weeks, they're weeks into their grand opening, and what if somebody didn't like the sign?
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? I see no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. Counsel Lozzi?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci, absent, Counsel Asier?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Next petition is the petition of Ares Cafe G, Greek African Social Club, for permission for a wine and malt license at 39 Buffham Street.
This matter is scheduled for a public hearing today, I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
Hi, my name is Burge, originally from Lynn, I just moved to Peabody, but I have this business I started about eight months ago. My customers all happen to be Greek, it's a Greek club, and everybody's just about over 50 years old. There won't be any kind of, any problem, they just needed a place to go, this social club, for that reason, I like to have this, to be granted, the beer and wine.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Hi, I'm Francis Martinez, North Shore Latino Business Association. They are members of the association, we're endorsing their application as well.
Thank you, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. Counselor Asier?
Thank you. Due to my colleagues' absence, Counsel Calucci and that's his ward, I'm going to make a motion out with table until he comes back. I'm sure he would like to speak on this subject, so a motion to table.
Motion made to table, non-debatable, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton? Yes.
Oh, sorry, motion to table.
Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci, absent, Counsel Asier?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi? Yes, Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. The next is petition of Hyde Home Building, Kevin Hyde, for permission for residential use in a central business district at 51 Liberty Street.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
Mr. President, through you to the members, I'm Attorney Sam Vitale, my office is at 60 Andrew Street. Kevin Hyde is sitting here in the first row. This property, to get people acclimated, is not very far from this building. For 100 years, it was the Seventh Day Adventist Church. Unfortunately, it burned, and you might recall, to give you some bearings, there's a city parking lot to the, to one side, and the Corbett, what I knew as Corbett Junior High School, but it's now Corbett Apartments, is up the hill, this sat, and a lot right between it, there was a fire. You might recall, the paper did a story that a dump grows on Liberty Street. That's before the Hides bought the property from the church. All that was there after the fire were people dumping furniture. What the Hides proposed to do, and why they're here before you, is, the property is right on the line, it's in the central business district, the zone ordinance says that any residential use in the central business district requires your approval and your consent, and that's what we're seeking this evening. What they propose to build is a series of two duplexes side by side. There is no required parking in the central business district if you have one and two-bedroom units. Notwithstanding that, they propose to have a garage under and a space in front, so there would be more than adequate parking for this site. It's not an over-intense use. Also, you may recall, and I know I was in a discussion with others, the city of Lynn is undergoing a strain for apartment homes. This is the front page of the paper of record in the city of Lynn, and it says, "For rent", that is, if you can find an apartment in Lynn. Now, I know this council's worked hard to encourage people to invest in the Lynn Way, but there are a lot of people in Lynn who can't afford luxury apartments. They can't afford to buy a condominium on the Lynn Way. They lived here a lot of times, lots of years, and they want to stay here. And what came about with successive councils has been an understanding that the way to make the central business district vibrant is to put people in it. And when you bring the people in it, you bring businesses in it. And so, I suggest to you that this is a modest proposal to do just that, to create a need for housing, for persons who want to live close to the downtown area, who may not well have cars, but notwithstanding that, there is sufficient parking. It's brand-new, state-of-the-art housing, where there was a 106-year-old church that burned to the ground, and where the lot has been abused by others in the neighborhood. The city's made a big investment putting the police station here, a parking lot for the police station. The Corbett Apartments, I think, have operated there successfully with many, many more apartments over the years, and I would hope that the council would give the Hyde family, who's got a reputation as good builders in the city of Lynn, an endorsement of this proposal. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. President?
Thank you, Attorney Vitale. During the discussion, there may be some questions. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. And I know this lot, and I was in fear that it was going to languish for years. I'm very grateful that this has come along. Couple of townhouses there, sounds like a good idea. I was kind of questioning at first until Sam mentioned the townhouse type of parking, and one in front as well, and that's good. It's right on the cusp of business, but I can't see any real business wanting to go in there. It's really, literally wrapped around the former Corbett School that is now about to be doing, undergoing some renovations themselves. They're going to be doing some work, and as a member of the Lynn Historical Commission, we've been working with them on it, and I just want to welcome them if they get this approval, and offer our advice if they haven't got some outdoors designs down yet. The Lynn Historical Commission can be a source for some advice for aesthetics filling into the neighborhood, et cetera, but welcome if they approve.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. Counsel Chakoudas?
Motion to approve, I sat down with Mr. Hyde, I think it's a great idea for the area. Instead of this empty lot that has trash in it, seems, I've worked with them in the past, and I'm hoping it works out good.
Motion made to approve?
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci, absent, Counsel Asier?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi? Absent, Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, nine yes.
Next public hearing.
Is petition of Union Variety for permission for a second floor for an apartment resident use, two-bedroom, at 88-90-92-94 Union Street.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
Mr. President, again, Attorney Vitale, my office is at 60 Andrew Street. Mr. Haake is seated here. Mr. Haake is a business owner in the city of Lynn, he owns a couple of Variety stores, one of which, I think people who are in the Union Street area are familiar with, Union Variety at 88 Union Street. Also, this is in the central business district, and he desires to add a second level to the building and use it for residential purposes. Again, the ordinance requires that in the central business district, or in any business district, the city council consent is needed for residential use. I won't repeat myself too much, but there is this, again, no parking requirement, but this facility would have up to six to nine spaces for parking. It would add a second level with two two-bedroom units. There'd be one on the first floor, next adjoining the store. I did speak with Counsel Calucci before he left and described this, and I think that he's spoken with the city clerk with respect to what he would wish to happen this evening, and I would be glad to answer any questions that the members may have, but it's similar to the prior remarks of mine, which I will adopt for this as well. There's a need for apartments, it brings people to the downtown, it doesn't be overly intense. I think the previous council, you might remember, Mr. President, I think in its last meeting in December, added 21 units, I think, in a building much bigger at the other end of Sillsby off of Union Street. This is, again, a modest proposal that I think addresses a need, which is housing for people who want to live and work in Lynn in close proximity to all that it has to offer. I'd be glad to answer any questions any member may have.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. This is exactly the example of what I think some recent zoning changes or ordinance has made, is trying to get away from rebuilding or building single-story resident, I mean, buildings in the commercial zone. So here's actually somebody who wants to come up and add one, and that's actually a good idea. So I'm in favor of this, I, again, offer the advice from, for aesthetics and design, because you're a pivotal corner building, and I don't know who made your sign, but I hope you pick a better architect and builder, because you've got two serious typos. Lottery has an E, it's not Lotree, and what if somebody wants more than one snack? I'm just pointing that out, and I think maybe this body approved that sign, so I'm just letting you know.
Thank you, Calvin, if you'd like to take a seat, actually, in the Ward Four Counselor's seat, I think we would be led to vote tonight. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing, opposition, 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 seeing no one in opposition, I close the public hearing, opposition, I close the public hearing. Counselor Asier?
Thank you. Again, with Counsel Calucci not being here tonight, I'd like to make a motion to table.
Motion has been made to table, non-debatable, and seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci, absent, Counsel Asier?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi? Absent, Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, nine yes.
And for all those eager to see Counsel Calucci return, we believe he'll be here next week on May 3rd. Next public hearing.
Petition of Central Square Artist Tents Francisco Menezes for permission to use, for the use of artist tent sidewalk and parking areas on Saturday and Sunday, 2:00, no flea market.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
Hi, I'm Francisco Menezes, I live in 19 Wasit Park in Somerville, but I do share a home that I bought with my father-in-law, mother-in-law, on Grove Street in Lynn since 1999, and I've been a owner of the property in Central Square since 2001. And so, what we have there is, I threw some pictures around that shows some tents popped up to basically get the artists that have frequented that street to, you know, on Saturdays and Sundays, start getting some activity on that street. It's a very difficult street to get people underneath there. You may or may not know, but I've opened up the first model, number seven, underneath there. We have 18,000 square feet of office retail, and the number seven's ready to go show you that, yes, there is life underneath the bridge, not just for the pigeons. But what we do need is, we need to bring some, some other ways of bringing people down there who will then get excited about getting underneath the bridge. It's not the, it's not a, the first place of choice for a lot of people, but some of the pictures that we have will show you that it is clean, it is good, but if we can get the people who are right at the head of, I think it's Market Street there, the Lynn Arts is right there, so they're all looking to start occupying that street. And if you see some previous pictures that I sent in the pictures, you see that whenever they do put an arts fair or anything on that street, it just jams up with people. So, we'd like to put the artist tents there and get the thing started. If it does well, we'd love the city, because I do own the, not many people know it, but I own the sidewalk and the parking down by Sillsby that's private, but I'd love for the city to open up the rest of that all the way down, because it is a 20-foot sidewalk, and I think that'd be a revitalization of Central Square, starting there. The second petition that'll be coming up afterwards is food trucks, but the first one up right now is just the artist tents. And I put some up, and I actually took a picture of what it would look like. So, in the pictures that you have there, there's actually a picture of what the tents would look like on the sidewalk.
Thank you. You might want to just continue to sit close by in case there's any questions. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. This is a good night for exciting things happening in our downtown center. Francisco's been pitching things for 14 years since he owned this property, and they all have been wonderful things, because he actually gets out of town and sees things that happen in vibrant other communities. So he's had some financial problems with the leakage from the MDTA responsibility, this and that, but he's open for business, and I say try this. And I'll go on record now approving in favor of the food trucks, too.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. Counsel Chakoudas, relative to tents.
Yeah, I've sat down with Cisco a few times, we've discussed it. I think it's a good idea, but what I'd like to do is maybe a trial run on the tents, because it's supposed to be artist, no flea market, so I'd like to try it as temporary, to see how it goes, if we have any complaints on it.
Okay.
So a trial run.
I'll take that in the form of a motion of a, do you want a particular timeframe?
Well, he is on here, he'd like to do it 8 to 5.
Any?
On Saturday and Sunday, so.
Months or weeks, or any particular months or weeks you want to?
Try the month, when do you want to start this up? When do you have people for the tents?
Well, again, what I'd like to do is to give it a full shot, you need to give it this summer, because some of these people, it takes time to build up a rapport and get people in there, so.
So would you like to try?
Try this season, and then if it doesn't do well by this fall, just say, we're not going to renew it.
Would you like to try maybe in June or July? We'll try a trial run on this.
Well, again, if I, I don't think just one month is going to do us justice, I think it needs, you know, the summer. I think I'd like to see three months, and, you know, kill it, not kill it, but show that it does, does work, and by September, say, you know, have the, have you guys look at it once again, see how well we did.
Well, that's what I mean, so if we did a trial run for one month, see how it goes, come back to us, and we can maybe extend it, let's see how it actually goes, if you can get people in these tents. I'd hate to have the permit out there and nobody in the tents, just empty tents, tents sitting there.
Yeah, of course, I think it'll shut itself down if we're not getting any, any feed. I think it really depends on the people knowing that they can, that it's, to me, I'm trying to get everybody involved in this, so it's not me saying there that I'm going to be.
So trying to get everyone involved, when do you think you can have somebody in those tents? June or July, we can try it. What month would you like to pick? I'm giving you the option, like, you want to try for July? Or do you think you can have people in there for June?
I think, I think we should get, get it going as soon as possible, at June 1, and then go all the way to August, I'd love to, you know, I don't think, if we just do it one month, I think what's going to happen is, we could have rain, we could have many things that would destroy it. The key is just stick to it, to say, we're here, we're going to try it, but I think you're going to get enough feedback to say that it should be canceled because it didn't do well this summer, but I think it's really a coordination of many of the groups that want this to happen, so I'm not the only one that wants this to happen,
want this to happen, so I'm not the only one that wants this to happen, because it's really me in cooperation with the Lynn Arts saying, hey, you guys can come out here now, and ideally, we would not only want me to be the guinea pig, but I want the rest of the street to fill in with additional, because you see whenever you've had a fair, that people come out in droves.
All right, so how about we say June 1st, but if we see any flea market, do we have the ability to shut it down, because it's supposed to be no flea market material?
Yeah, you put down the stipulation.
Excuse me, sir. So that's a question for Attorney Lamanna. Attorney Lamanna, the question is, if the City Council grants a limited special permit, essentially, for a limited portion of time, and there is a restriction of no flea market type activity, what would be the process of the city enforcing that special permit?
Be a condition to the special permit, and if there was a violation, ISD would cite the operator, but that's certainly a valid condition to place on the special permit.
Thank you. Counsel Trahan.
Thank you, Counsel President. I sort of, you know, threw you to the, Francisco, now, do you have people all lined up, like, you know, have you been talking to people? That want to come down to have tents?
I've talked to people in the years prior, and there was a lot of interest, but then I didn't realize that you had to have a special permit for that. And this year, I haven't gone out and I've talked to people, food trucks was a unrelated matter, they, there's interest for that. I've had people that have talked to me about it, but you can't get anybody to commit. I'm from Union Square in Somerville, so I have talked to a bunch of the 10 people down there, but they say, what do you, what do you, do you have it in line? Is it ready to go? Because a lot of people saying, if you don't have it in line, I'm not going to commit to nothing, because there is some commitment to product.
Do you feel confident if you, if you get disapproved tonight, that you'll be able to get this approved?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you're very confident. I mean, again, I just didn't realize that there was a process. I thought I could do something on my own property, but I'm following the rules as I was.
So they do this in Somerville, and they have a real?
Yeah, I mean, Union Square, Somerville, and it's just, it's, it's, there's a huge, you know, we call it country granola, hipster crowd there, and they do very well between the, the arts, I mean, it's very, very good. And there's no flea market down there. If anybody's ever been to Union Square, there's no flea market there. It's really, everybody's just in the whole art scene, kids, it's very family-oriented, so it's, it's really good. I think it's going to be very well, and I've been in Somerville since 71, and I, Union Square just turned around. I think Lynn, Central Square is another Union Square, Somerville. It's got everything it needs. It's got the train, it's got the transportation, it's got the people, and you've got 6,000 new people that live in that, you know, on all these factors that turn over, so, like I said, I've, I've been there since 2001. I got a lot of great ideas, but some, some of them will turn on quickly, but some just need persistence, and you will get people down there.
Right, you need a little time. Okay, great, thank you.
Counsel Seer.
Thank you. I get to do some traveling around Massachusetts and outside, and I know exactly what you're talking about, and if the thing does take off, it could be very beneficial. I mean, if you go to Gloucester, you go to?
Portland, Oregon.
Portland, Nantucket, down the Cape, anywhere, on the weekends, go up to Vermont, Maine, and you can see people come down for all the exhibits, and, and especially if it's the local artist. I think it makes sense, I think it would work. If I can make a suggestion on licensing, what we do is what we call 30, 60, 90, so every 30 days, you would have to come back in front of the council to make sure everything is going the way it's supposed to, and by doing that, you're giving him the summer to be able to run it. He would just have to come back, you know, at the end of June to that council meeting, stand there in front of us, and if any problems do arise, such as the flea markets, or someone down there trying to sell car parts or tires or anything, we could put a stop to it at that by just putting that stipulation in there. Gives you the opportunity to prove to us that it would work, and I think it really will, like, you know, I'm, I'm, open arms, open arms. I'll be down there a lot.
In my application, I said specifically, no flea market. I knew that was a concern. I said it right in my application.
No, I personally think it's a good thing, and that gives you, to get him to come here in front of us every 30 days, and if he's not doing what he said, then we can just draw, you know, suspend the permit.
Counsel Chakutis.
If I could just add, as Counsel Seer said, maybe if we could just add that as a friendly, friendly amendment to it, at 30, 60, 90, it, it works for us.
Counsel Chakutis.
All right, you know what? Maybe we will do that, the 30 days, and then they have to go back.
30, 60, 90.
Go back in front of them, starting, because the first Saturday is June 4th, so it would be in effect as of June 4th.
Counsel Chakutis, if your motion is a motion to approve a special permit with the stipulation that it begin on June, the weekend of June 4th, and that the petitioner must return to the City Council within a meeting on or before 30 days expiration, 60 days expiration, and the 90 days expiration of the original date of June 4th?
And I'll second that motion.
If that's your motion?
Motion to.
Motion to approve those stipulations, and seconded. Is there any discussion? Did we leave anything out? Nope, no, no more for you. So I would, just for a point of reference, the motion is made, seconded discussion, discussion would be, there is a meeting June 28th, which I think would be felt for you, and then there is a meeting in July on the 12th, and then August the 9th, so that should give us a good kind of idea of how things are moving. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci, absent, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, 10 yes.
All right. Next petition.
There's a petition of Central Square artist tents, Francisco Meneses, for permission to allow food trucks to park on private parking spots, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM weekdays, and 7:00 AM to 12:00 AM Friday and Saturday.
Anyone who wished, I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
Yes, so, again, I'm in the ironworks business, and some people do know that in Central Square, we're opening up a training school. We'll bring in 300 to 500 new inspectors nationwide to do fire escape inspections, and we get hungry. But aside from that, the food trucks are going to be, because my travel, I've seen food trucks everywhere in the country, San Francisco, Portland, Jersey, you know, New York, and these things are doing very, very well, and they revitalize an area that nobody else would think that had some life in it. And so I've seen a great mix, where there is food trucks, there's trailers, there's restaurants, and there's just so many people that just get down there to an area that they wouldn't, that would just normally traverse. So in, in that street, Mount Vernon, but a lot of people go through that street, and they just need, one of the people that had talked to me said, you get a breakfast truck over there, because sometimes in traversing from the parking lot in the back, going all the way to the trains, or vice versa, but they said, if you can get some food trucks in here, I think that would add to, also to the, to the tents on the, on the weekend, but I think we need to get some action going on there to prove that that street has some life, and the food trucks will bring people, I think, from the general area, and it's worked well in other states and other cities. Okay? And, and with that, I think the food trucks are also going to do very well to getting people to finally commit to being under the, under that bridge, because once you start feeding people, they're looking for a place to eat, and, and believe it or not, that underneath that bridge is, if, if, I invite all of you to come down and look at our model number seven. It's 750 square feet. Come take a peek. I think you'd be amazed what could, what could happen underneath that bridge.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Or anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, and noting that Calvin Anderson had noted his favor in the previous public hearing, I'm going to close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor, and over the public hearing for those in opposition.
Good evening, esteemed members of the council. Clint Mookie, I live at 169 Lynn Shore Drive. I also serve presently as the Deputy Building Commissioner and the Chief of the Inspection Division. Respectfully, I would suggest that the council deny this petition, or at the least table it at this time. I can advise the council on, on several interrelated reasons for that advice. First and foremost, it is noteworthy that there's a great deal of interest in food trucks right now. The Inspection Services Department is, is receiving calls from individuals on a, on a near daily basis about bringing food trucks into the community of Lynn. There are, there are various problems with that at this time. First and foremost, there, there is no comprehensive ordinance that provides for, for food trucks on, on any public property in the city of Lynn. I have spent time studying the ordinance that was adopted in the city of Boston. It includes a wealth of, of factors that, that would contribute to and, and allow the inspectional division to, to enforce where vehicles should be, one such thing being that the trucks that are operating within the community of Boston are outfitted with GPS monitors that the city is able to track them. As, as a practical matter, when we have a, a mobile establishment subject to enforcement, locating it in order to do such enforcements becomes problematic. So, so in the absence of any sort of comprehensive ordinance dealing with food trucks, the manner in which they've been dealt with thus far is to treat them as open-air stands under the current zoning ordinance. This, this has some, some unintended or potentially intended consequences, and is not without its own problems. In, in doing so, if, if one were to review the zone ordinance, you'll find that open-air stands are permitted in, in a lot of regions where we would not, or I would not presume that the council would be interested in having them. They're also not permitted in, in some places where I think it, it makes practical sense, such as anywhere within the Linway. The, the, the other issue with, with granting a, a special permit for, for a use at odds or that requires a special permit is that, that such, that, that sort of permit would ultimately run with that property so long as that use continued without interruption. And, and given, given that concern, and, and related to that is, is the particular private spaces that, that the petitioner has identified for this project. Recognizing that, that those are in fact private property, notwithstanding that fact, they certainly appear to, to the average passerbyer as, as to be public parking spaces upon the street. And I think that if the council were to allow trucks to come into those spots at this time, what we would very soon encounter would be numerous and persistent complaints about trucks on public properties that, that ISD inspectors are, are asked to go out and locate, and, and again, there would also be an absence of, of any sort of comprehensive plan to deal with these trucks in terms of permitting them, identifying who's operating them, identifying where those persons can be found, and at what time those persons can be found. So while I am personally incredibly in favor of the idea of bringing food trucks to Lynn, I, I find that this particular proposal is, is problematic, and I, and I would suggest that it, it would be appropriate for the council to take up a, a, a larger discussion about the parameters under which they would like to allow trucks to come into the community.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Counsel Chakutis.
You know what? Can we table this right now?
Motion made to table, non-debatable. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci, absent, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, 10 yes.
Public hearings to be set down. If there's no objection, we'll take them all at once. Seeing no objection, we'll take them all at once.
Okay, this is my personal favorite. Petition of Dreamnails Lounge LLC for permission for wine and malt pouring license for a nail salon at 592 Essex Street. Petition of Margarita Rodriguez for permission for a food establishment with 20 seats at 141 Essex Street, Monday through Sunday, 7:00 to 10:00. Petition of the Boneyard Cristobal Colong for permission to build a stationary barbecue takeout, one-story stationary trailer at 702 Linway, hours of operation Thursday to Sunday, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And petition of Casa Amelia, Amelia Reynoso, for permission to sell wine and malt at an existing restaurant at 183 Lewis Street, hours of operation 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Sunday.
I wish to listen to the council. Motion made to set down by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Lozey. All those who have opposed, know the as have it.
Unfinished business? We have nothing. Ad-hoc committee relocating of the polling places.
Oh, Counsel Seer.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear.
I need, if you could come, please, and take the podium?
Oh, okay. Could you repeat what you just said, Mary?
Well, I was going to the committee reports, but I must have missed something. All right, well, we're back to the committee reports. The ad-hoc committee for the relocating of the polling places, Counsel Annette chaired, but if you'd like me to, do you want me to tell them what we had decided? We had, there was a motion made to move the polling from English High School to Marshall Middle School, which I think everybody was waiting for that to happen. We've also had discussion regarding other polling locations and maybe separating some, moving some to a different location, and we're still in the process of reviewing and looking into other areas in the city. So right now, there is, that's the only motion that was made, to move that polling location.
So is unanimous motion made?
That's correct.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ways and Means Committee, we have several orders. If there's no objection, I'll read them all together.
Please.
Okay, the first order, that the city comptroller take the following action, transfer the sum of $1,398.05 from DPW expense to DPW bill of prior year. Certify as an available fund the amount of $1,498,484.00 as allotted to the city of Lynn by Transportation Bond Bill Chapter 90 for fiscal year 17. Certify as an available fund the amount of $50,000.00 as allotted to the city of Lynn. Community development by the Massachusetts Historical Society to fund Phase II grant initiative to perform repairs and to refurbish the High Rock Cottage, grant period extended to 6/30/16. Transfer the sum of $5,200.89 from the city clerk payroll to the election payroll. And order that the city clerk be directed to cause notice to be advertised at the meeting of the qualified voters of the city of Lynn will be held in several polling locations heretofore designated for the special state election on Tuesday, May 10, 2016.
Counsel Annette, what was the?
Mr. Vice President, all order of the committee to accept. I make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill, absent, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci, absent, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, 10 yes, and they have requested emergencies on all of those.
Motion on the emergency?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill, absent, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci, absent, Counsel Seer?
Roll call, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill absent, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci absent, Counsel LaPia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Public property, we have one order that was approved with an emergency. I will read that. Order that the law department draft the necessary documents to convey an easement upon the city-owned property at 606-608 Summer Street to Henry Nguyen and Thu Tran. Further order that or under the may be authorized to execute said easement and any, all necessary documents and furtherance of this transfer, and also a motion to authorize the DPW to donate five computers that are incompatible with the city of Lynn network to the International Gospel Church.
You're pretty busy tonight, huh?
Yes, you know, you're not missing order of committee. I make a motion to approve.
Is it seconded? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci absent, Counsel LaPia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes, and they request an emergency.
I'll second the emergency. I request an emergency, yes.
Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci absent, Counsel LaPia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.